There's one member present.
We have eight members present and these two perform. Mr. Calanter, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Holden. Please relax. Please come to the chair. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. I'm not waiting for you. I'm just waiting for you. of occupancy until you complete the B permit work. It said that you can't have a building permit until you complete the certificate of occupancy work. In the committee re, committee yesterday that heard this again and reported it to you with, in the same manner that they intended the first time, to say that you can't get a C of O until you finish your B permit work. In that committee, three, three people testified relative to the fact that in the last thirty years, Ed Howell, who you know, the former district engineer in many of your areas, twenty-seven years as supervising the fulfillment of these standards for the city, testified that he had never heard of such a thing. The Department of Transportation representative, I don't know if he's down here again today, said that in thirty-three years of his experience, he'd never seen it happen, and Jack Greenspan, traffic engineer, who's here to testify for you today, said also that in the last twenty-seven, I think it was twenty-seven years of his experience, that there'd been no such condition applied. Now, that, that not only kills the project, but it also kills a couple of improvements that have been represented as being the purpose for this. There were two suggestions for traffic controls. Both of them were rejected by the Department of Transportation as not necessary, but Mr. Pacheco feels that they are necessary. Uh, our, the owner of this property is willing to, to do anything for safety that, that can be shown to have any substantial need for, for protection of anybody, and he has said that even in spite of the fact that there are, that the Department of Transportation, the private traffic engineer, both say that there's no need for these controls, that he's ready to put them in as a part of the project, provided he can put them in after he gets a building permit. Now, the reason why it has to be done this way is in the regulations of the State of California, that say you can't spend money on construction in advance of the, of the flow of the money, that, basically putting a lien on the grant. And so, uh, so we're in that, that kind of catch. Now, that led to the lawsuit, of course, and brings us back here today. There are two problems that, that were in, in the lawsuit, although only one of them led to where we are today, and that was a procedural method, that, problem that was before you. The other is a substantive problem that runs to federal law, which we have not pursued as of yet, and that provides a right to damages against both individuals and against, and against the, the government if a condition is applied to low-income housing, which is not generally applied in municipality. Let me make one more point, Mr. President, and I think it'll save us some later, and then I'll let our other technicians come in. And that is, yesterday, there was a suggestion that, uh, an argument that was raised for the first time after these years, uh, has been raised for the first time, that refers to the hall route permit, saying that the hall route permit is inadequate, and saying that there are only two, two flagmen, and there should be three, and we've said, fine, if that's what you want, we have three. But the hall route permit question is not before the council, and that's why I mentioned the fact that we're sitting here as the Planning Commission. The Planning, the, the question of the hall route permit was raised before the Department of Building and Safety. The hall route was worked out with the Department of Building and Safety. It was appealed to the Building and Safety Commission. It was worked out with the Building and Safety Commission. It was approved, and there was no Prop. 5 on, on the hall route permit. So the hall route permit is not before us today, nor are questions that have to do with a hall route permit and its adequacy. Although certainly, if anybody's got any suggestions as to what might have been done after they had the hearings before the Building and Safety Department and the Building and Safety Commission to improve things, well, we certainly have an open mind on it. But that matter is not before us today, and cannot properly, I believe the city attorney would agree, cannot properly be taken up by the council. Uh, you have several experts on, on the issues that are here, and we'll have them called one after another.
Okay, Elva, Elva Grant. Elva Grant, if you had anything else to add?
Yes, I'm Elva Grant, Principal of Grant &amp; Company from Sacramento, California. I'm also here on behalf of California Council for Affordable Housing. It's a group that's been in existence over twenty years that promotes and supports affordable housing throughout California. We are particularly concerned about the procedural issue before us on this project, and we see it as a delay tactic with no merit. In my twenty years of experience in this field, I have not ever run across a situation that we have before us. I represent nonprofit and for-profit developers. I work with the tax credit financing that is, uh, a must for affordable housing projects. Without tax credits, you have no project. And I have been involved with tax credit since its inception in nineteen six, eighty-six. The program is governed by a very complicated set of regulations, and the process is very competitive. Uh, air, each cycle, the committee receives about a hundred and sixty-two applications, and only thirty-six are funded. The process is also based on point system. Applicants must maximize their points to achieve tax credits, and readiness is one large point getter. It consists of four major components. One component is pulling permits within a hundred and twenty days of receiving the preliminary reservation. If the hundred and twenty-day requirement is not met by pulling permits, the project loses credits.
Yeah, but speak right into the mic, the kid's hearing.
Okay. Um, let me repeat that. If, if the one hundred and twenty-day requirement is not met, and that is to pull the permits, the project loses credits. The project is dead. Negative points are assessed, and that basically will take the developer out of the tax credit system for approximately two years. Um, I ask that, uh, the council take a serious look at the situation before us and understand that it is a stall tactic. It is not assisting, uh, affordable housing for our state that is much needed. I, I, I can't stress enough how affordable housing must be, uh, part of our state, and, and all I can say is, we cannot let this project go by the wayside.
Jack Greenspan, followed by Ed Howell.
Uh, member of the City Planning Commission, my name is Jack Greenspan. I'm with the firm of Lynn Scott Long, Greenspan Engineers in Pasadena. Our firm prepared the traffic study for the subject project. I'm going to address two things. One, in my more than thirty years' experience, I have never seen a project where traffic engineering-related improvements were required before building permit. They're usually required, without exception, before certificate of occupancy. Secondly, the issue of the hall route and hall safety. It has been noted by the council office that a traffic signal should be installed prior to issuance of the building permit, primarily as a safety measure with respect to the hall route trucks, which may use that intersection of Huntington Drive and Mission Road. As part of the hall route approval, uh, flagmen are required, adequate signing is provided, and that will be done based on using the city's own watch manual, which is Work Area Traffic Control Handbook, which calls for advanced signing, adequate flagmen, and also gives instructions to the flag persons. And among those instructions, it, uh, tells people to basically not stand in the middle of the street, but stand to the side. In this condition, we have an island on one direction where a person can stand. We also have sidewalks where an individual can stand and then step out to the edge of the roadway when a hall route truck has to enter the intersection. We believe that there is adequate safety being provided by the, uh, flagmen that are required by the hall route permit, and therefore, no traffic signal is needed at this time.
Ed Howell and Sherman Banks.
Uh, my name's Ed Howell. I'm retired city engineer employee. My purpose here is to state that never has this ever been done where you require the improvements to be installed before you get your building permit. Uh, that was, uh, also affirmed by Robert Takasaki in yesterday's meeting, in his thirty-three years' experience, and foremost by Councilman Burnson, who also said in his twenty-one years of land use planning, he'd never heard of such a condition. Anyway, I just want to say it's very unusual, and, uh, that's my purpose for being here.
Sherman Banks and Carlos Chavez would be next.
Good morning. My name is Sherman Banks, but at this time, I'm going to refer to Gail Gordon.
Gail Gordon.
Good, good morning, honorable counsel. My name is Gail Gordon. I'm an attorney at Hughes Hubbard &amp; Reed in Los Angeles, and I, along with Mr. Snyder, are representing the development company in this case. I'm, I apologize for being so late. I did bring in this great pack of materials for you, but up until late last night, we were putting together materials that addressed what happened at the Plum Committee yesterday, and notably, that's an exhibit about the hall route. In any event, I have just read the Planning and Land Use Management Committee report, and we would ask you very sincerely to please adopt this report. It appears to be a very fair resolution of this issue. Our client will be able to go ahead and build its affordable housing, and it will work with the Department of Transportation and the Bureau of Engineering to solve whatever, whatever traffic or hall route problems are important. In any event, the most important thing to our client is that any traffic signal will not need to be installed prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, not at any other time, just prior to the certificate of occupancy. Thank you very, very much. I'll be here if you have any questions for me.
Carlos Chavez.
Good morning, Mr. President and Councilman. I came here, I'm a retired city worker, and I, I would like to, uh, say that I would like to have the, this light before the project was made, so we can eliminate some traffic. That's all I have to say, sir.
Romero.
How are you, Mr. President and council members? Uh, my name's Michael Romero. I'm a, I'm a, I've been in the resident of Alserino all my life, and I grew up in Esmeralda Street, right there where the site's going to be project at. Um, you guys ever been to the Speedway? Speedway is a fast track, and this section right here is a fast-moving, um, um, section. Um, if you're coming from, um, North, South Broadway and Mission Road, you have a, a signal light there, and it's a good light, but when that light, green light goes, and it's going down Mission to Soto, to Huntington Drive, people, the, the cars are getting speed up to forty, fifty, maybe sixty, seventy miles per hour on that section. And I'm, I'm over here, I'm here today, this morning, to get a light into that section because it is a dangerous, um, section for flags and for children after the building's built, um, to be crossing without a crosswalk or a signal light there. Um, I had three friends that got killed right there in that section, three friends, um, due to, you know, Trump's careless driving or other persons hitting them. So my, I'm, I, I would love to see a light there. I mean, we know Mr. Hernandez is in the next district right there, and Mr. Pacheco will be both meet right there, so we would love, love to have a light there before construction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the cards we have, so the public hearing was closed. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, the Plum Committee reheard this yesterday after a requirement by the courts to do so. Um, essentially, what we have here is a question, the main, only question here, really, is at what time will the improvements be made, the signals? Essentially, the applicant, the developer, has agreed to every single request that's been made of the, uh, by the council office. Uh, the only problem they have is with the timing, and as you heard from the representative, um, from the government, that, um, if they do not get their permit within a hundred and twenty days, they will lose their financing. It's as simple as that. So the real, the real question here is, when will the signals be put in? Mr. Pacheco is insisting they be done before any construction starts, which is completely different from any other project that I've ever encountered. I don't recall, and nobody in the city can remember, when anything was done in this manner before. So one can only discern that perhaps, or somebody might make a case against us in court, that the real purpose of this insistence was to kill the project, in which case, that means a lawsuit, it means a taking, and I assure you that we will surely lose that as we have in the past, such as Warner Ridge. So I would urge that we move forward and approve the committee report. Uh, the only thing that the committee did differently this time, we added another flagman, which will make three altogether. Uh, we asked the, um, city engineering department to start proceeding with the signal immediately, and that they can start the work, and that the developer can reimburse, uh, the, um, the city for that work as soon as they receive their funding. At any rate, let me also point out that without a subdivision there, this could be developed as apartments without any improvements. Uh, if they don't need a subdivision, they don't, there's no conditions that can be placed in there. So the people that really want a signal there, and really want these improvements to be made, need them to be approved with this project, because otherwise, they're not going to happen, and you'll continue to have the problems that you have on this dangerous area. And it is dangerous, there's no question about it. In fact, a signal should have been placed there years ago without this- due to, you know, Trump's careless driving or other persons hitting them. So my, I'm, I, I would love to see a light there. I mean, we know Mr. Hernandez is in the next district right there, and Mr. Pacheco will be both meet right there, so we would love, love to have a light there before construction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the cards we have, so the public hearing was closed. Mr. Bernson.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, the Plum Committee re-hearred this yesterday after a requirement by the courts to do so. Essentially, what we have here is a question, the main only question here really, is at what time will the improvements be made, the signals? Essentially, the applicant, the developer, has agreed to every single request that's been made of the, by the council office. The only problem they have is with the timing, and as you heard from the representative, from the government, that if they do not get their permit within a hundred and twenty days, they will lose their financing. It's as simple as that. So the real, the real question here is, when will the signals be put in? Mr. Pacheco is insisting they be done before any construction starts, which is completely different from any other project that I've ever encountered. I don't recall, and nobody in the city can remember, when anything was done in this manner before. So one can only discern that perhaps, or somebody might make a case against us in court, that the real purpose of this insistence was to kill the project, in which case, that means a lawsuit, it means a taking, and I assure you that we will surely lose that as we have in the past, such as Warner Ridge. So I would urge that we move forward and approve the committee report. The only thing that the committee did differently this time, we added another flagman, which will make three altogether. We asked the city engineering department to start proceeding with the signal immediately, and that they can start the work, and that the developer can reimburse the, the city for that work as soon as they receive their funding. At any rate, let me also point out that without a subdivision there, this could be developed as apartments without any improvements. If they don't need a subdivision, they don't, there's no conditions that can be placed in there. So the people that really want a signal there, and really want these improvements to be made, need them to be approved with this project because otherwise, they're not going to happen, and you'll continue to have the problems that you have on this dangerous area. And it is dangerous, there's no question about it. In fact, a signal should have been placed there years ago without this project, but it didn't happen. But here's an opportunity to do it. There will be adequate, in the opinion of the committee, there will be adequate control problems, traffic control precautions taken during the construction, and before one single person moves in, before one single certificate of occupancy, even a temporary, is issued, all of the improvements will have to be completed. This is normal, and any deviation from this puts the city at risk, I can tell you that. And I would urge that we proceed and approve the committee report. I, I sympathize with, and I normally try to accommodate any council member on what they wish in their district, except when it jeopardizes the city, and I, in this case, I believe it does jeopardize the city. So I would urge an "aye" vote for the committee report.
Mr. Pacheco.
The most I, uh, Mr. President, colleagues. You know, when I was a prosecutor, one of the things that we tried to present during the hearing was facts, and the one fact that has not been presented, and that everyone is discussing this on, is the fact that right now, as we discuss this matter, this project does not have any tax credit funding. Zero. So the lawsuit's not even ripe, there is no problem. Right now, they're on a wish list, they're number two on the waiting list. It's all speculation, it's all a fantasy land that they have any tax credit money in this project. They have zero. And I find it ironic that we're making a decision based on a starting point, at least the prior speaker talked about funding as if it was ripe. It's not ripe. The second thing I want to point out to you is that it's not my intention to kill the project as some people have represented. The current place is a horrible place to build, it's a place that I would never build, and if I had the unilateral authority to make it go away, I would. Unfortunately, I do not. The law allows construction there. What I have told the developer, and what they are, what they are unwilling to do is to compromise and meet me, and meet the city, and meet my concerns halfway by building senior housing there, affordable senior housing. So the idea that we're against affordable housing is, is, is preposterous. We totally support affordable housing. I'm not convinced that this is a safe place, but considering the law and the rules that I have to work under, then I would propose that senior housing location. And we have met and discussed several times with the developer about that. The argument that's never been done before, why I was elected to this position to bring a new perspective and fresh ideas to the city and to the district. So bringing up a bunch of retired individuals from the city and telling me that's never been done before is only, not only insulting, but really not persuasive. If we made decisions based on that argument, progress would never happen. If the developer were sincerely concerned about the safety of the community, and he was not just concerned about his own financial interest in this project, on July 7th, when this condition was imposed, he would have started building that traffic signal. He would have constructed the safety measures, and if he gets his tax credits in the future, whether it be in December, as we anticipate, since he's on the waiting list, that would push the deadline to April. He would have had close to a year to finish these conditions. But instead of doing that, he hires Art Snyder and a bunch of experts to come and attack me personally in a lawsuit and the city. So instead of doing the right thing, he wants to fight doing the right thing. He wants to persuade you that the fact that he can go to court and file a complaint is going to put fear in us, that we're not going to do the right thing. The idea and the problem that we had in the past, as was presented by the attorneys, is that we did not present a record. Mr. President, I know I've gone over my time, but at this point, to satisfy the, the attorneys, I would simply refer my colleagues to a colored map that I print, I gave you of the intersection, which identifies nine different entry points with four, four lanes of traffic that are unobstructed, that flow, and I will ask the clerk to play the videotape that we brought. It's a short, one-minute videotape maximum. So my colleagues can appreciate this intersection. If you look at the videotape, you will see that there's two lanes of traffic that are unobstructed. On your color map, those are in red. Those are going from El Sereno to the downtown community. This is a morning commute that you see. Those have no controls at that intersection, and they keep going. On the left, you'll see a, a lane for the haul route where the trucks will return back and enter into the site, and they have to cross three, two more lanes of traffic that are coming in the other direction, which will be shown in the video in a few seconds. This is the two lanes of traffic coming in the other direction that's unobstructed and does not have to stop. The traffic you see there queuing up is from a second stop sign, which is shown in the map that you have in blue, and right next to him on the right, that stop is the traffic that would come from the haul route, the truck that we discussed in committee. This is a very unique and unusual intersection. Nowhere else in the city of Los Angeles have I seen such a configuration. You can stop the video at this point. So the idea that we are not to respond to these unique situations with unique approaches is unsound. It's unsound public policy, and I ask you, and I'm gonna, I believe Mr. Bernson obviously has the committee report before us, I'm going to make a substitute motion that on conditions A and C, that we make those improvements prior to any building permits being issued, and really basically reaffirming our earlier decision of July 7th. And so I make that substitute motion at this point for those two points. And the only thing I would add at this point is that my staff believes that technically, what the intent was of the committee was to bring back the July 7th decision, except for the timing changes, and the report does not reflect all the changes made July 7th, so we're going to have to deal with that technically. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, uh, what's real difficult about this thing is I've been in the same place, Mr. Pacheco, is when I was trying to fight Pacific Pipeline and ended up losing. Part of what's confusing and what has to happen here is we have two sides who are basically opposing each other, and they don't want to admit that. Mr. Pacheco is correct in saying he does not want this project built the way it's proposed in his district. And the developer is correct in saying he wants to develop the project according to his rights. And sorry to say, the constituency loses because they're not talking to each other. Now, I got to be honest with all of you, is I'm in a win situation here. And the reason I'm in a win situation is because the videotape you just saw was primarily my district. What you didn't see on that videotape was the project site, because the project site is on Soto, and the Soto was not on the videotape. What was on the videotape was Huntington Drive and Mission. And I've been trying to get a signal there. In the past, I asked for a signal, and the Department of Transportation years ago told me it did not want the signal. Now, that was in the days when they kept on saying things had to move, and I did not understand my power. Today, I understand that I have a right to put a signal there, and I need a signal there, because Mr. Pacheco's talking about the housing that will be built and the kids that will be part of that housing crossing the street to play with the kids that already live there in my district. And so I want the signal, not because of the housing project, but because of safety issues. So it has nothing to do with the project. And I, is part of the recommendations from the Plum Committee is that a signal be moved on right away, and I want a motion saying that. That's the problem with today's argument. You see, that is not the argument to use to try and get the kind of project Mr. Pacheco would like to see for his constituents. And sorry to say, the developer is choosing to spend a lot of money trying to develop his project without really trying to figure out how to spend some of that money to develop Mr. Pacheco's project. And Mr. Pacheco isn't spending a lot of time trying to figure out how to get some funding so that the developer develops the kind of project Mr. Pacheco would like to see. I'm just kind of explaining it because I'm in a win-win situation. I want that traffic signal, and I'm glad Mr. Pacheco made the presentation and got DOT to admit they need it. But I honestly believe the Plum Committee has created the environment to try and provide the safety during the construction. I also think it's wrong for us to require the developer to build the signal before we give them a building permit, because the way we do it is he cannot occupy temporarily or permanently that structure until he completes the conditions, and that's the way we do it at City Hall. And we can't change it because right now, it doesn't comply with what Mr. Pacheco would like to see. I think it exposes us out to a lot of liability. So members, I basically am part of the majority in the unanimous report submitted by the Plum Committee, and I ask for an "aye" vote.
Mrs. Ch, Mrs. Chick.
Yes, actually, some of my questions have just been addressed, but I, I did want to ask about the ifiness of the funding on this project, and I realize that that is not necessarily a criteria of approving a land use approval. But I, I do understand that this is not a definitive, uh, that the funding will come through. So does the project fall apart and end, and that's the end of the signal discussion, of course, as well, or?
My name is Ajit Mithaiwala. Thank you for inviting me, Laura Chick. I represent the project. We are, at this point, waiting on the waitlist, number one waitlist, we are looking for only a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If I put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the project, I can get the tax credit right now. We haven't pushed it because of this hearing. Number two, I have another project called Mission City Lights, where I have a six million dollars worth of tax credit. I will swap the project, and we will build the project. If you vote okay to me, give me nine votes, you will have a signal and you will have a project. I'll give you my word on it.
So the, the financing and being on this waitlist is not the deciding factor?
It is not a problem because we have another project that, okay, thank you very much. And Elva Grant can tell you, she's an expert.
No, that, that's okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
Did anyone move to make the signal requirement a part of the record before they would get a CEO certificate of occupancy? Did you do that? Well, well, it just, well, I don't know, uh, Hal, yesterday, after you voted the way you did yesterday, I don't know what you recommended. But I, I can tell you this, that, uh, thing that bothered me with part of your discussion, Nick, is that a former city old retiree speaking before us, he's alive. There will sometime be a former old city retiree who would like to speak before us, but he'll be dead. And each of us who lived that long, eventually, some of you guys are going to die. Now, I didn't include myself in that. But that's just happened, that's just a cycle. So next June, some of these councilperson will see the end of the rope, and they won't be here anymore. Doesn't mean they don't care about the district anymore. And I can understand how you feel because you have a strong opinion about what you're requesting. But then there's a fairness doctrine, there's not four against you, it's not four against anyone else as they take a position on this issue. What it really is, is that what's reasonable and what's feasible and what's fair. I don't, if, if you were saying to me, Nick, that this building can be built, this project can be continued on its way, and then there's no condition for a traffic signal, and that's really what you want, then I would go along with you. But I, I don't understand the rationale when we know darn well there will not be anybody occupying the building unless there is a traffic signal there done simultaneously. Then what are we requesting? I don't know. I'd like to see a hospital right near there, too. You see, so I, I just don't know. I mean, my people, your people, everybody people will be served by this project. And, uh, as much as I always never deviate from the position of supporting the member of the district, even when I don't like some of them, and I guess I can point you guys' whistle, and that'd only be one or two. But the fact of the matter is that on something like this, I remember Joy Picas, when Joy Picas got us sued, and we all went along with us. Mr. Bernson, same, we went along with him. But in the end, the city pays off, and, uh, you know, you're asking us to go into a lawsuit that we inevitably are going to lose, and so I'm concerned about that, Nick, I really am.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the third member of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, we, I was part of hearing this again yesterday, and I want to tell the council that I was sympathetic to the issue of, even though it had not been done before, provide the signal before building permit. And the reason was on the merit of the case. The reason was, as the video demonstrated, this is a difficult intersection, and it's going to be made more difficult because that is the intersection that the hauling of trucks coming onto the site to haul away dirt, to create a place where building can be put, that intersection is the, is the intersection that the trucks will be going through. So add to that very high-speed Speedway, I think someone called it, and add the dump trucks coming and making left turns and then another awkward turn. I thought that just on the merit of the case, at that time, it made sense. But we did have someone from the Department of Transportation there yesterday, and I asked the specific question of Department of Transportation. Would it, that intersection work better with those dump trucks with a signal in place or with the flagman as suggested by the haul route? And the city's Department of Transportation said that the flagmen controlling that intersection during the haul route of the dump trucks would be more effective than the signal there because they could really work specifically when, when the need was, was the highest. I did express some concern that having, in fact, two flagmen, which is now what is going to take place at that intersection, in a somewhat precarious position, was not the easiest flagman position to manage. But with the Department of Transportation's information that, in fact, the signal early for the purpose of doing the construction and the hauling would not be as, as useful as the flagmen, I was then persuaded that the norm of having the signal at and prior to any certificate of occupancy or temporary certificate of occupancy made sense, and that's why I went along with the recommendation. It seems to me on the merit, on the facts, on the issue that was substantively a reasonable issue to correlate the signal sooner than, than certificate of occupancy was essentially shot down by the Department of Transportation itself for the very reason as it relates to the, the ability to haul, to have the haul route trucks go through there. So for that reason, I supported the majority, the unanimous recommendation of the three members of Plum who heard this, feeling that getting the signal, getting the Department of Transportation to work on the signal now, and the only caveat I want to make, I think there needs to be a clarification, that although we're having Department of Transportation work on the design of the signal, that that is to be money to be reimbursed by the developer so they can begin working on that design now so that it can go into place as soon as the design is done and prior to certificate of occupancy.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, first of all, to Mr. Holden, I find it insulting when people say it's never been done because what they're trying to point out is that you're the new kid on the block, and you don't know any better. That was my only point. I find that very insulting, and it wasn't meant to be any negative statement about anyone who's a retiree. And second of all, to Mr. Holden, we all have memories of all our votes, and if there's one thing that you are very good at is reminding all of us when we don't support you in your district. So just make a note of that. The second thing is that I find it ironic that the committee and the developer all thought it was important and significant enough on the record, and to make a public record, that more flagmen should be placed here to improve safety, but not enough that a signal should be done before any construction or any increase in traffic and volume. The record that was made yesterday in committee incorporated my early positions about the children, and Mr. Hernandez is correct. This is about, once the development is done, I am not, let me tell you, and Mr. Holden's right. Let me tell you, and Mr. Holden's right, I take pedestrian safety so serious that the county hospital who has blown me off, or the county who has blown me off for 10 months about a pedestrian bridge being funded, okay, for that new hospital, now complains that they're losing $126,000 a day because we won't give them what they want. Well, let me tell you, if it's $3 million that cost them, that they created this problem, I have less sympathy for a developer who is in the same boat of creating their own crises. If he had started the construction of the signal in July, when it was imposed upon him as a condition, he'd be done by now. But instead of doing that, he'd rather fight us. And like I said, sometimes doing the right thing means doing the right thing. We have had number of meetings with the developer to have a win-win situation with him that would provide affordable housing for seniors. Number of meetings. But it's difficult to make and find a solution of funding when the number, the gap, keeps sliding. One day it's $5 million, another day it's $2 million, and it keeps sliding because I can't get accurate records as to what's been invested in this property so I can work with the Housing Department to make this a win-win situation. So, yes, I take this very personal in terms of people accusing me of not putting an effort into making this into a win-win, because we have. And if the developer would give us accurate figures, we'd have a win-win. But unfortunately, no, because all they care about is their project, they don't care about the safety concerns, because we'd be done now if they cared about the safety concerns. And the last time we met with the departments, they told us that even when we impose public improvements that are bonded, that at some times, the end of the project, those public improvements are not done.
Okay, thank you.
And that's a historical point. Let me tell you, and let me finish with this. I'm the council member for the 14th District. Yesterday, in committee, there were three individuals who represented the district, Mr. Schneider and Ms. Alatori. Both Mr. Schneider and Ms. Alatori were with the developer. I'm telling you right now, this is for the community's safety. I believe in pedestrian safety. I'm going to fight for it.
Mr. Burnson?
Members of the council, I appreciate the councilman's concern. You've heard the concerns of the committee. We feel that the interests of the, and the needs are being met and going to be, all the requirements that have been asked for are going to be done. Just a question of whether this is a device, as some people might say, for stopping the project. I don't know, that may or may not be the case. But we cannot be a party to that, otherwise we become a liable for a lawsuit. So, I would ask for a no vote on the amendments, the substitute motion of Mr. Pacheco, and an aye vote on the unanimous committee report. And I think that keeps us in a safe position. And I think that all the safety requirements that Mr. Pacheco says that are wanted will be done prior to any occupancy, and there will be a bonding and there will be no certificates of occupancy. So, unless the signals are done, the project will never be occupied. So, you can be sure that that will happen in this case. And we have also instructed the Engineering Department to begin the design of the signal with the understanding, the requirement that any city cost will be reimbursed by the developer, and that moves the signal that much ahead. So, I think all the requirements that have been supposed to be what is necessary are being taken care of, including the safety, including the work during construction, safety requirements, the flagman, and everything else. And I would ask for a no vote of the, of Mr. Pacheco's substitute motion and an aye vote of the committee report.
Mr. Fuer?
Move the question.
Mr. Fuer, move the previous question. Prepare the roll. Prepare the roll on the previous question. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 3 noes.
Okay, that is approved.
Oh, wait, record me as a no vote, please. I'm taking the vote. On the previous question, sorry. Sorry, I moved the previous.
Yeah, Mr. Fuer has moved the previous question, been approved. Okay, the first item is Mr. Pacheco's motion.
The clerk wanted me just to clarify that. He just, whether it's a substitute or amending, it's an amending motion, not a substitute. It's an amending. That's all the clerk wanted to clarify.
Okay, amending motion. Prepare the roll. Prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
7 ayes, 6 noes.
That failed. Now, we have Mr. Burnson's, the committee report. Prepare the roll.
Mr., clarification?
Mr. Pacheco's, the clarification is what?
The intent of the committee report was to adopt the prior conditions, and the current written report doesn't do that. I just want to know if that was the, the actual written report, except for the timing issue, I understand that.
It adopts the previous report with the changes that were made during committee, yes.
Okay, prepare the roll.
The text is not accurate, that's my only point. So, can we go and make sure that, I understand the timing issue's been resolved to certificate of occupancy, can we just make the record clear that the text is the text that was adopted July 7th, except for...
Let's ask the city clerk then, as long as you're going to be technical here. Let's ask the city clerk whether it does that.
If I can help clarify...
We're not going to open up the meeting again because...
The committee report says that it's subject to previously adopted conditions of approval, so it includes those that were adopted in the council, except for the timing issue.
Okay, prepare the roll on the committee report. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Members of the council, let's go through the agenda first. I know item two, they have cards, but why you want to go through and get rid of everything that's not in, so...
Next sentence, Mr. President?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, show Mr. Pacheco the no vote.
Thank you.
Okay, 5 through 10.
5 through 10 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, item 7, we do have some cards, although we've been to a public hearing already.
And item 7 has two reports on the file and a motion is required.
We'll call that special. 5, 6, 8, 9, and 10, any specials? Huh? 6 is called special. Any other specials? Okay, we have 5, 8, huh? 5 is called special? Okay, we have 8, 9, and 10. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. 8, 9, and 10. Okay, the next group?
Items for which public hearings have not been held, 11 through 26.
We have cards on 14. Anybody want to be, anybody want to be heard on any of the items other than 14? Public hearing is closed. Any specials? 11 through...
26. 26 has an amending motion.
Yeah, we'll call, 11 through 25, we'll call 26 special. 16 and 25? Any other specials? If not, we have 11 through 13, 15, and 17 through 24. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item. Fourth with on 9. Fourth with on 9. Next item?
Mr. President, the next item is number 2. You have cards on the item.
Which one?
Item number 2.
Item 2, we have a card. Joel Moskowitz? And then Solomon or something.
Members of the council, I'm Joel Moskowitz, and I'm attorney for appellants, Neighbors for a Safe Environment, and some individuals you'll be hearing from today. I feel a special burden. I'm here asking you to reject the advice you're getting from the councilman from the district. I'm asking you here to reject the advice you're getting from the Plum Committee. I'm here to talk to you about an environmental impact report that I suspect not many of you have read, and yet I'm going to tell you that that impact report is wrong. I'm going to tell you that we're going to challenge it in court. I'm going to tell you we're going to win, and I'll tell you why. Because there are three things wrong with it. Number one, it doesn't tell you anything about this, the baseline of the project. It doesn't tell you the noise this project is putting out. It doesn't tell you the poison gas it's putting into this community. It simply won't tell you. There is a proposal, and you're going to find out, you know, in a couple of weeks, what kind of gas it's putting out. The AQMD is going to go out there, and Mr. Fuer's suggestion is going to measure that, but it'll be too late. You will have already approved this project. You'll have already certified an environmental impact report that doesn't take that into account, and this community will be suffering from that for years to come. It doesn't have a baseline. Number two, there is no enforcement. One of the things you're required to do, and a recent case just came out of the Court of Appeal on this, you're required to have findings as to why it is and how it is that the mitigation monitoring program is going to enforce this thing. You don't have that. What you have before you in the mitigation monitoring program is a list of agencies that, in fact, have never enforced this thing, aren't going to enforce this thing, and there's nothing to enforce. One of the most annoying things to the community is that the standards that are supposed to be enforced don't even exist. If you look at the mitigation monitoring program, you look at, you look at the conditions that are mitigation conditions, they're saying that we're going to figure out sometime how quiet this has to be. Do you know this place is 40 feet from where people are trying to sleep at night? Do you know that this project has been approved for 24 hours a day, seven day a week drilling? It's never been that way before. It's gone from 10 days during a month during working hours to 24/7. There is no need for it. It is simply a slap in the face at this community. It is frankly outrageous. And the EIR, what do they tell you about it? They say, you know, if you were trying to sleep in the middle of Pico Boulevard, it would be just as noisy as it is after this project is built. Great. How many of you try to go to sleep in the middle of Pico Boulevard?
Mr. Moskowitz, there are 11 other people, including some of your clients, who want to be heard. Are you planning to take the whole time? And if you're going to give them the time, could you do so?
I'm going to say one more long sentence, and then I'm done. There is no finding within the EIR and no discussion concerning the impacts of this project over time, how long it, how much longer it will take to pump out another 15 million barrels of oil. The EIR simply doesn't discuss it. I really think that the council should give this a look. I know our burden we're suffering under here, but frankly, we're going to have to live with this thing for decades and decades and decades to come, and you really ought to give us some consideration. Thank you.
All right, now, of these, we're not going to be able to hear from all 11 people. So, since you all know who you are, can you pick, let me stop the timer here, can you pick, say, three people who are going to speak? And tell me who you are so I can pull the cards. Everybody's card will be a part of the file.
My name is Mina Solomon. I live next door to the project. Through the years, I have been to eight hearings on the project. You are putting there a project that is coming up for so-called review in two years. In two years, you will do nothing about it as well. I have never found enforcement. There is not an agency that I have ever spoken to. You have not found it now, nothing has changed. And I have here an article in the Daily News. You are about to do the same thing you did to Sunshine Canyon. Exactly the same thing. I have watched the lobbyists point fingers at the council people and warn them that they were told what to do. I have watched the lobbyists threaten, threaten that they are going to lose votes, threaten city officials that they are going to lose votes on this. And I have not yet the hearing, Councilman Fuer, that the lobbyists have had with you. You are about to do the same thing you did to Sunshine Canyon, and I don't think there's any one of you that has the moral fortitude to do the right thing. Not one of you, not even the one that has empowered the neighborhood, so to speak. You have disemboweled them.
Thank you. All right, I'm, okay, Rabbi Gagnisman.
Hi, my name is...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
My name is Dr. Sucha Parmal from Atmospheric Analysis and Consulting in Ventura. My involvement in this program, in this project, is to design the ambient air monitoring program around the drill site to obtain the real speciation of the air quality in the neighborhood so that a real EIR can be prepared. The, I had a chance to review, the environmental impact report was given to me, and that is based on basically theoretical calculations and predictions, no real ambient air quality data. So, that was, my proposal was to develop the air quality program and get some real measurements so that I will collect the samples surrounding the community around the drill site and analyze them using a proper EPA methodology, and that will be useful for the impact report. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We're now going to switch to the, well, we have lots more cards here. We can go on as long as you want, but we do have another agenda, and we have some people who want...
I move we extend it for a few more speakers.
For what?
Can we have one more speaker?
Yes, you can have one more speaker.
I'm Dr. Rochelle Feldman, and I am the president of the Neighbors for a Safe Environment. I'm also a pediatric pulmonologist. I've raised my children in this neighborhood. And I want you to understand that I am not directly opposed to the proposal, provided that there is a way to measure what we currently have, then properly extrapolate what's going to happen, and then determine how we're going to monitor this. Those are the three things that are absent, and those are the three things that are going to destroy our children's lungs. My brother has cancer, lymphatic cancer, due to an exposure to benzene 35, excuse me, 35 years ago. That was then not a known, it was a known carcinogen, but the knowledge of how much benzene was being put into the environment was not known then. We have no right now, 35 years later, to expect people to have known in an era when it was not known what effect it would have. But we now know. We know that the particulate matter that comes out of these drill sites is horrendous to children's lungs. We know that they breathe at a faster rate, that they're closer to the ground, and that all of the children in this neighborhood are being exposed to the risk of chronic lung disease, are having higher rates of asthma, and eventually, as adults, will end up in our cancer wards. How can you, in the face of what's happened with tobacco legislation, not anticipate and not require this company to provide the actual measurements of what's coming out now, project from that to what will come out under their proposed project, and submit on a regular basis to a regulatory panel?
Okay, thank you. All right. Start the clock over again here. Max, I can't read it, White something, Greg Brown and Jonathan Friedman.
My name is Max Whitehouse. I live half a block north of the site and have done so for 17 years. The site has never been an enormous problem to me in any way, shape, or form. I am here speaking as an individual, not for anybody. When the opposition began to mount its forces about a year ago, I felt it behooved me to go to the library and read through the environmental impact report. I did so, and I'm not going to stand here and tell you I understood all of it because I damn well don't. But what I did understand, and almost anybody who reads it can understand, the recurring conclusion that is in that report, no negative impact, no negative impact, over and over and over. The opposition's protracted litigation has now become counterproductive because if it were not for that, the improvements that Brightburn has proposed would be, would be well on the way to being completed. As far as I'm concerned, it's a win-win situation for the neighborhood as well as Brightburn because it is scientifically, environmentally, and aesthetically a plus. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Greg Brown?
I'm Jonathan Friedman.
All right, you're Jonathan Friedman. Pull the microphone up, you'll be much more comfortable.
Good afternoon, Madam President and members of the City Council. My name is Jonathan Friedman. I am a member of the Board of the South Robertson Neighborhoods Council. I live seven blocks from the proposed Brightburn project. I am appearing here today not as a representative of any organization, but as a resident and small business owner. I am not a royalty owner, so I have no direct financial interest in this project. I am here to urge you to deny the appeal and uphold the certification of the Brightburn EIR. This project has been studied exhaustively by agencies at all levels of government, local, state, and federal. It has been reviewed... It has been reviewed by the EPA, the AQMD, the ARB, and the BLM, a veritable alphabet soup of regulators. Their unanimous view is that this project will improve the air in my neighborhood. The current proposal imposes 78 conditions on the operation of this project, which ensures its safety. Residential neighborhoods and oil production facilities need to be prepared to share space if our city is to continue to prosper. The Brightburn modernization plan is a win-win proposal for the community and the company. It reduces noise and odor and enables production increases. It is a sensible project that will bring benefits to the city, the neighborhood, and the company. I strongly encourage you to give it your full support. Please reject the appeal of the project's opponents and uphold the certification of the Brightburn EIR. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Now, is Greg Brown here? Is that you?
That's me.
Okay. Pull the mic up.
Greg Brown from the law firm of Brighton Brown, representing the applicant Brightburn Energy. I would just like to comment on just a couple of the points. You have very detailed materials that have been supplied to you, but that is just a reminder that this facility exists currently. This proposal, one of the primary focuses of this proposal is to remove an existing diesel engine that's at the site for workover operations and to replace it with an electric rig that removes those diesel emissions from this neighborhood. That results in a decrease over what is currently there in terms of emissions. And a quote from the letter received from the California Air Resources Board, which was received at the request of Councilman Fuhr, who also, we have letters from the Environmental Protection Agency, from the AQMD, et cetera. Let me quote from the ARB. "The proposed project will result in an improvement from an air quality perspective due to the removal of the existing diesel-powered workover rig and replacement with an enclosed electric-powered I'm here to answer any questions. Each of the issues that have been raised here in general terms are covered in detail in the materials that we've submitted. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we obviously would request that you affirm the unanimous Plum Committee report.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. For those of you who did not get to speak, your cards will be incorporated as part of the file, so you are legally a part of this hearing in any case. So, the public hearing is closed. Ms. Mizakowski is up first.
Thank you, Madam President. We also have with us the zoning administrator, Emily Gable-Luddy. And members of the council, I just want to make clear that this is not a new project for oil drilling wells in this location. This is a site that has been an oil drilling production site since 1965. What we're looking at is that workover equipment that is temporary in nature, is powered to do the cleanout in some of the wells, and is powered by an open-air diesel truck engine. That is what is at that site a number of days every month now and has been for a number of years. Diesel-operated, as it cleans out, it's in an open-air environment so that all of the toxic waste, the particulates, everything else are out in the open air. This project is to create a permanent, enclosed, clean-out drilling workover tower that is going to be electrically powered, have vacuum exhaust in it, within it, so that anything that is cleaning out that it might be spewing out is going to be contained and dealt with within this facility, and the environmental impact report indicated that. As was indicated, the Air Quality Maintenance District has looked at this, the Air Resources Board of the State of California, the State Department of Conservation, and any number of other health-oriented organizations, all coming to the same conclusions. Not only is there no negative impact from this project, this project is going to make a net benefit to the environment in that community. As was discussed, what people for the last 35 years have lived with there is open-air diesel production, some of the worst of what we now know that has been out there and allowed in the environment, but this is there since 1965. What this project does today is not only modernize it, that's the word that is used, but it really environmentally protects and secures as we probably would were this a new drilling site at all if considered today. It is a net benefit, a net negative, a net positive in the environment, particularly in the air quality, as well as noise, because noise of something that is exterior and diesel as compared to something that is enclosed and electric is going to be a phenomenal difference. The other important part of this that I think the community raised with legitimacy was enforcement, was the history in the past of any number of agencies sort of pointing a finger in the other direction and saying, this wasn't our responsibility, go talk to somebody else. What the zoning administrator has put in place is a very specific tracking and path for enforcement by multiple agencies where the zoning administrator will now become the citywide coordinator for monitoring all the reports that all the agencies have to provide, including a twice, every-two-week report that will come to the zoning administrator with a mechanism set up for the red flag, the alarms, and being able to shut down the project if the thresholds, as indicated in the report, and the number of conditions are not being met. The only recommendation I wanted to make today, just because as the committee considered this, there were a number of things that we looked at that were done in this report by the zoning administrator for this project, and we wanted to instruct the police, fire department, building and safety, zoning administrator, and others, including meeting with the South Coast Air Quality District, to look at citywide, the creation of the mechanism that we are taught, that has been put in place for this particular project. So I would like, when we vote, to vote on recommendations number one and two, which deal with this appeal, denying the appeal, affirming the certification of the EIR, and adopting the findings, and then separately vote on item three, which is a motion really to direct a citywide effort to incorporate these same management skills, coordination of activities, coordination of all these enforcement agencies for a citywide approach in looking at all our other existing drilling districts throughout the city. So my recommendation is to vote on items one and two of the committee report, and then take a separate vote on item three.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. As our colleague, Ms. Mizakowski, points out, this is a site that's been in this location since 1965. It's permitted and does perform oil drilling, pumping, and production 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Those issues are not on the table before us. It's entitled to do that. The question is not whether those activities will be removed from the location. They're perfectly legal to be there. The question is comparing the status quo with respect to one aspect, and that's the working over of the pipes, lifting them out of the ground, cleaning them, and repairing them and replacing them, whether that activity can happen more frequently or not. That's all that's before us. That's all the IR is addressing. And the question is, when we've analyzed the effects of that activity at the site, given its current diesel-powered, perfectly-legal operation, is it better for the community to allow that to continue, as it has? Or is it preferable to adopt a different approach that, according to the Air Resources Board, reduces cancer risk in the neighborhood by hundreds of times? A huge impact on the kids who live, and the families who live, and the people who work in the neighborhood. Before us is an approach that will diminish cancer risk and improve air quality. When the EIR came forward, which is all that's before us today, I'll share with you colleagues that in addition to reviewing the EIR and asking questions that were responded to, I went to the leaders of the California Air Resources Board, the Air Quality Management District, the EPA, the Bureau of Land Management, all of them, along with the Department of Conservation, which is responsible for oil and gas leases in the state, and asked them to review the EIR and determine whether its conclusions on improvements in the community from a health standpoint were accurate. With the exception of the Bureau of Land Management, which said it couldn't opine on that issue, it had no expertise, the balance of those agencies all responded that the EIR was confirmed, that EIR's analysis was confirmed by their analysis. Given where we are, given that the EIR certification is before us, the question comes, what about enforcement? It's a good question. It's a question that deserves to be asked, and here's the response. We have letters that have been transmitted to the zoning administrator from the Department of Conservation, saying, among other things, that they will both work to create a first-of-its-kind-in-the-city hardwired system with the fire department to assure that if methane or hydrogen sulfide levels approach any level that could be dangerous, there's a warning that goes off at the fire department, and the fire department has written a letter that says it will shut it down if it's dangerous. The Department of Conservation has said it will do the same thing in addition to its monitoring of the site. The Air Quality Management District submitted a letter saying it too will be vigilant in assuring public health and that rules and regulations are enforced at the site. The police department, responsible for noise, is here. Their letter, because of the police department's bureaucracy, is forthcoming, but the police department has assured me that it too will be vigilant on the noise aspect of this project, and the letter on that will be submitted to Ms. Gable-Luddy as soon as it's received from Chief Parks. That's what's before us. Should the IR be certified? Should the air quality improve in the neighborhood? Should we have enforcement that will raise the bar for these facilities throughout the city, which there are many more not nearly as conditioned? I urge that we support certification in the Plum Committee report.
Ms. Goldberg.
I really didn't have too much to add except to make sure I understood this, that, what are the consequences of not doing this in terms of safety? That's really what I wanted to get some, some understanding of, because I understand what the arguments are in favor of doing it, but we have some folks from the public who believe that it is safer to do nothing, and I just want to hear a little bit more about whether that's true or not.
If I could just, real quickly, Ms. Goldberg, on your time, the Air Resources Board did, at my request, a specific within the few blocks around this project model of what the air quality would be and what the cancer risk would be. And it disclosed that the cancer risk within short distance, a few yards, 50, 100 yards of the site, would be dramatically improved by more than 100 times if the project were allowed to move forward, which is to say, if it does not move forward, the cancer risk, which is predominantly associated with the diesel at the site, will be much higher than it needs to be for all those kids and all those schools and all those seniors and all those synagogues in the immediate area.
Mr. Holden.
The community people that are here in favor of this project, would you stand? Your community people. Now, the community people who are opposed to the project stand.
No, that's to leave.
Oh, some of them had to leave. Well, I think the key issue here with me is the health, health issue, and maybe somebody can answer it. There's some lady standing up and says that they had, go ahead, on my time. Will you make it quick?
Yeah, we'll be very brief. The point is that nobody has ever measured this site. There is no baseline. What they've measured is from the sea to downtown.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there a baseline? Can anybody answer that question? Yes or no?
Yes, Councilman Holden, there, there is baseline. The EIR contains at length the measurements of current noise and current air emissions in the project's site.
At that site?
Yes.
Well, shh. They said at that site. I mean, what can I say? I mean, it could be, if they're not telling the truth, then that's, that's on them. She said at that site. She answered your question. So, I know, it's not in my district, and the fact that matters that whatever action I take here, unlike item number one, will not generate a lawsuit necessarily. So, and another fact I want to make mention of, that I'm not running for reelection. And some people will be leaving come June 31st, and I won't. And so, I'm not asking anybody to try to make me look good in my district. I think they'll need me to make them look good in theirs, especially if they're running for reelection, which I have no objection to doing. But I just wanted to make that point because there are threats from time to time, and some are not well-received. But I will say this, that I've said this over again, it's Mr. Fuhr's district, and even though he never, ever gives me anything I ever want, never, ever, when it's in his district, I've always voted with him 100% of the time. And I'll do it for anyone else when we're not threatened with a lawsuit. End the subject, hopefully.
Mr. Fuhr.
Yeah, I just want to make.
The public hearing is closed. The public hearing is closed, sir. The public hearing is closed. I will repeat it one more time. The public hearing is closed. This is Mr. Fuhr's time.
For everyone's information, I want to say very clearly, and I wish Ms. Gable-Luddy would respond if I misstate this, the EIR is, among other things, based on data submitted from the site regarding air issues. In fact, that data, which is produced by what is technically called in the trade, I guess, a sniffer, is provided on a monthly basis to the AQMD and becomes part of an AQMD annual report regarding conditions at the site to supplement that which is already provided regarding air sampling at the site itself, which was the basis for the EIR. In addition, the Air Quality Management District, in furtherance of its obligations under condition 37 from the BZA and the ZA, has agreed to conduct on its own an additional test to assess whatever air emissions would be at the site, and has agreed to make any further recommendations it deems necessary, although at a meeting I called last week, which included the Department of Conservation, AQMD, the appellants, and others, the AQMD indicated it did not expect anything different to arise from this test than that which has arisen from the numerous tests performed at this site for years. Ms. Gable-Luddy, is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The matter is before us. Ms. Mizakowski had asked that we vote separately on recommendations one and two, and then, we vote on one and two, and then vote on three. So open the roll on recommendations one and two. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
Those are approved. And recommendation number three, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
How'd that happen? Okay. All right. That's approved. That is approved. All right. Next item.
Cards. Next item, number five, called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes, I called it special, members of the council, to offer an amendment, which is on your desk. I don't think we need to discuss it. It's simply transferring from Attachment A to Attachment B of the ORS file. So if there is no objection to the amendment, open the roll on item five as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Item six, I believe, is the next.
Called special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Ms. Goldberg, push the speaker button, please. Thank you.
I just wanted to know, I know there's a staff member here, if you could come forward. Is this related to the DNC, this $400,000?
That item is not related to the DNC.
Okay. What item is?
Contained within the August financial status report is an estimate of many items of possible additional costs. One of those are additional costs for the DNC as reported by the departments, but we are preparing a more extensive report to come back to the council on those costs.
Okay. I don't recall seeing a August report of General Services before. Do you do monthly reports to Budget and Finance?
The, my name is Richard Hart, and I'm with ORS. We do a monthly report to mayor and council, and included in that would be departments that are reporting problems. This item before you is just to make some changes in accounts within General Services. Money was placed in one account, and they said it properly belonged to another account. It's just a technical adjustment.
Okay. Thank you. So when will we get the DNC information back?
We're assembling it from, getting it back from the departments right now. We don't have an exact date because we don't have all the information yet.
Two weeks?
Roughly, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. That seems to be it. Open the roll on item six. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number seven, called special. There are two.
Two reports on the file.
And an amending motion.
And who called, oh, wait a minute. Who called this? We have a card.
And I'd like to ask for a 10-minute public hearing.
We have one card. Do you need a 10-minute public hearing?
Oh, the one card? Never mind. How about a three-minute public hearing?
That's okay.
I thought there were a lot of cards, so.
No, I have, well, I have only one.
Fine. Then I'll move a three-minute public hearing.
All right. Is there any objection to a three-minute public hearing? Hearing none. The public hearing on item 14 is, item, sorry, item seven, jumping the gun here. And we'll hear from the representative of the Los Angeles Metropolitan Alliance.
Good morning. My name is Neda Maena, and I represent the Los Angeles Metropolitan Alliance. My name is Neda Maena, and I represent the Los Angeles Metropolitan Alliance. We're an alliance of community-based organizations, unions, and faith-based organizations. We're here to speak on the Workforce Investment Board's annual plan. Last week, we spoke before the CED Committee about specific concerns we had with the annual plan, and these were on issues ranging from wage standards to job quality and others. At the request of Councilmember Mike Hernandez, we met with the Workforce Development Department to try and work some of these issues out. I'm happy to report that we were successful in working some of them out, but there are still some outstanding issues that need immediate attention. We outlined these in a letter that we faxed to the council. The two most important of these issues are the issues of wages and demand occupations, because we believe that especially in these times of an economic boom, that it's imperative that the City of Los Angeles do what it must to ensure that the hardest-to-employ populations are not left behind. Our concern with the WIB annual plan is that it fails in its mandate to improve the quality of the workforce and reduce welfare dependency, because it lacks specific focus on these populations that are hardest to employ. We fully understand that the Workforce Investment Act is not JTPA, and that this legislation has a different orientation than JTPA, but we believe that just as with the issue of welfare reform and the city jobs program that the city established, that there is sufficient latitude within the new WIA requirements and regulations, and that there's an opportunity for the City of Los Angeles to set the bar high and put in place a model that can lift people out of poverty and break the cycle of temporary low-wage work. Now, we're asking the council today to make sure that the annual plan meets that standard and takes that opportunity by ensuring that the Workforce Investment Board annual plan does two things. One is include a self-sufficiency wage for training and for employment after training to guarantee that workers who go through the Workforce Investment Board-funded training are not placed at low-wage dead-end jobs. We feel this is only logical because the city already does this in two places, through the living wage ordinance, which pays people $8.97 an hour, and through the city jobs program, which pays people $10.20 an hour. We also feel that this is logical because currently, the Workforce Investment Board targets people who don't make a self-sufficiency wage for eligibility for training, and therefore should require that employers give people a self-sufficiency wage when they're finally employed. The second issue, then, is we want to ensure that the annual plan doesn't simply use demand occupation approach to targeting jobs for placement, because demand occupations is simply too broad and can include occupations that are high in demand but have low wages and do not provide stepping stones to enter career growth and greater self-sufficiency, such as fast food and retail. I guess finally, the last thing I want to say is that you will hear that employers won't hire people if they have to pay a self-sufficiency wage. You will hear that people in poor communities don't want training, and they just want work. Well, we're here today to say, because we believe that the city can do better, and the city has done better at least twice before, and should continue to do so. We believe that these two issues are critical, because they deal with the end result of what training and job placement is supposed to be about. If these two things aren't put in place, then we fear that the Workforce Investment Act may very well fail in its mandate to move people to self-sufficiency and experience the same types of problems that we experienced under JTPA, because it simply doesn't make sense to move down the road without knowing if this road will take us, you know, on the high road towards career paths and self-sufficiency, or down the low road of poverty and temporary work. So, we urge the council to recommend that the Workforce Development Department comes back with policy recommendations on self-sufficiency wage and an approach other than demand occupations within the next five weeks. Thank you.
We thank you for your testimony. That closes the public hearing. We have two members of the council wishing to be heard. We begin with Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Members, we've tried very hard to keep you abreast of the changes where the Workforce Investment Act, because it was a drastic change in the way the city provided job training, and it didn't come from the city, it didn't come from the state, it started from the federal government. And this has been ongoing for the last two years. And I want to commend the Los Angeles Metropolitan Alliance, because they have really played a role in trying to make sure we're aware of some of the issues from the perspective of the constituent who'll be receiving the services, and how it is that this can make a difference. There's no question in my mind that when you talk about our workforce in the City of Los Angeles, there's a huge gap between the haves and the have-nots. And we held a three-hour public hearing in regards to this particular issue just recently. And I want to point out three recommendations that were basically part of the result of that hearing, because I think they're important. See, this is a tool that is being shaped and reshaped to be more effective. But one of the instructions, Instruction 21, basically required the general manager, CDD, or it's designated to review the workforce's annual plan for purpose of determining changes required as appropriate and report back to the Community Economic Development Committee in six months with recommendations. The reason we made that recommendation is to allow us to make changes. And they have to report back not only to the WIB Board, which is a separate entity from this council, but to the council and the mayor. If you remember correctly, at one point, this was going to be report back to the mayor and the WIB Board. Well, now, we changed that to make sure that it included the council, because we wanted to make sure we were part of those changes. Another instruction said, "The general manager, CDD, are designated to coordinate the meeting with the WIB to address issues introduced by the Metropolitan Alliance letter." And basically, we wanted all those issues addressed, and apparently, that process began, but I don't think it's over. And we want to make sure we continue to work with them. The third instruction basically dealt with working on the language of work first, because I think both sides agreed that that was not appropriate definition, and we wanted to make sure that we did the work to, basically, as part of our mission statement, as to what we actually wanted to do. The City of Los Angeles has been a model that the Metropolitan Alliance has impacted in a very positive way, and I think that we've developed some good projects, and we want to expand those projects. We want people to have a career path. We don't want them to have a dead-end job. We want people to basically be able to not only find employment and training, but also continue that employment and continue to grow through that experience in a way that they can sustain themselves and their families. That is a goal that I think the City of Los Angeles has tried to establish. It's not necessarily the case in other entities and in other municipalities, but I have found staff to be listening, and I've found the Metropolitan Alliance to be a valuable resource, and I think that the WIB Board is working with us. It's a complicated process. I'm asking us to continue moving forward in this process, and we have to have a system in place so that we can start implementing a program and then reviewing that program as to whether it's accomplishing its task. And at this time, I think that we have that beginning, and I just urge a non-vote.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Ms. Goldberg. Please.
I have to move some amendments in regards to personnel exemptions, and they're included in everybody's desk.
All right, so there will be amendments that are to be circulated if they're not on your desk already. Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, I just think it's important, because we're talking about a lot of money.
Members of the council, we're about to make a decision about something that I'm sure everyone is interested in, so if the speaker could get your attention, it would be helpful.
And the reason I mention this is that this is the first, obviously not important to everybody, the first of many of these. In the document that we all agreed to establishing this board on the 29th of March of this year, we talked about a policy statement and plan preparation that the WIB, the mayor, and the city of council each approve. We approve the policy statement, we approve the five-year plan, we approve the annual plan, and we approve overall policies. The first point I wish to make today is that I urge those of you who will be here long after I'm gone to not do this as a rubber stamp, but to take seriously the council's role in looking at these issues. And I say that because we are really talking about how to implement a program that involves, what are we talking about? Tens of millions of dollars?
Forty million.
Forty million dollars. So, we're not talking about nickels and dimes, and by setting up the WIB Board, which was required by the legislation, we're turning over, once the policy and plans are in place, we're turning over all the decisions to the WIB Board, not elected by anybody. Now, that's okay. We're happy to have them, we're glad they're willing to do it, but the critical part of this, then, is that each year, as we look at the annual plan, each year, we look at the policies, this cannot be routine on our part, because once it's acted upon, basically, you don't see it again till the following year, and a lot of money gets spent. So, I really rise to make that point. It is very important. Now, there are time limits, and that's why we're moving forward today, but I do think that there are a couple of issues that are flawed, and I'd like to make a motion to deal with that. First is, we have a definition of self-sufficiency wage, but it is thus far only used to define when you can no longer get training paid for by the program. It does not say that we want to set as a goal that employers pay a self-sufficiency wage if they're in this program, and to have one-stops and training providers target jobs that meet the self-sufficiency wage. And I would like to move that we ask the department to report back on this issue in four weeks, first, and then with a status report, and then a full report to CED in 90 days.
All right, Mr. Hernandez, you second that motion?
I second that motion.
Now, I want to make clear that we're not saying that only employers who pay a sufficiency wage can be involved in this, but without a target, without a goal, without directing them to try and do that first, then we really have missed, I think, a very important point. The other issue that I want to raise is that there should be a minimum self-sufficiency wage during the training and post-training employment, particularly the training part, since I've already taken a look at the urging that we do it during the post-training employment. And I would like to ask in my motion also that the department report back on how we might focus on making sure that there is a self-sufficiency wage during the training period, or to what extent we could reach that goal, or what is more practical, and I'd like to add that in the, also in the report back in four weeks.
All right, is there a second to that amending motion?
Finally, as the chair of personnel, our report is here, is number 7, and it is before you with all of the various personnel issues, and I will move the, as to the personnel items in the report, I will move the Personnel Committee report. And I just want to point out to you, in the Personnel Committee report, Item Number 6 was submitted without recommendation, because it talks about a senior project coordinator, and these are all exempt positions, and the chair of personnel keeps trying to find a way, since we are increasingly using project coordinators throughout the city, that we look at some point or another having a civil service classification. This is subject to the civil service classification allocation and the Employee Relations Division as to pay grade determinations. And so, I would just say that we did not concur, I did not concur, this was heard just by me, I believe, I did not concur with that one, because I have an ongoing problem with the number of project coordinators' positions that we have now. Seems to me it's time to have a classification that goes with that and eventually gets us to a point where these are civil service-
All right.
...as they are multiplying like rabbits.
Thank you very much. You've heard the amending motions. There's no one else wishing to be heard. I trust that all members of the council are clear as to what is before us. Madam Clerk, you want to address the council?
Mr. President, there are two reports. There's a communication from Personnel Committee and also the CNED Committee report. Do you wish to vote on those separately?
Ms. Goldberg, I thought we, Mr. Hernandez?
We're in agreement, so I think that they can be voted together with the signed amendment by Ms. Goldberg and myself.
Right. So, the entire matter is before us. The two reports have effectively been merged, and the amendments have been well-stated. Madam, Ms. Goldberg.
My staff assures me that I left one item out of my little additional motion on the report back. And that is, is that we also hear back from the department on whether or not it's possible to target jobs that meet self-sufficiency and job quality standards and not be limited to demand occupations.
Yeah, that's consistent with the other two motions, as near as I can tell. So, it's a report back, is it not?
It is.
Mr. Hernandez, we're still at one?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I know we're ready to vote. I just wanted to comment on some of the comments made by Ms. Goldberg.
All right.
When we asked, we sent out a letter asking if you had names for the WIB Board early on in the process, and I thought that was important. We also sent out briefings. We thought that was important. This is a whole restructuring of our job training program-
Right.
-with an emphasis on getting people off welfare, but also career paths. And I'll give you examples. People could be part of a work crew for the City of Los Angeles, get no job credit for that, and get no preference to be hired by the City of L.A. on a permanent basis. And we want to make sure that we create that kind of career path, where people have an opportunity to work for the city if they're part of the city's training program. And we want to create that same kind of emphasis in the private sector, and when we're talking about the sustainable wages issue, we want to create that emphasis, not necessarily as a sales clerk at a store, but rather, how do we get you into a job that'll give you an opportunity to move beyond that? Because we understand that those wages might not be sufficient to sustain a family. I'm putting that emphasis, because the reason I was trying to give six months for a report back was because I had, at that time, about 260 days left.
Right.
And I had a clear understanding that it would be coming back to me to review. And I need to share with you that sometimes it's lonely, serving as the chair of CED, especially when you have three-hour hearings. And a lot of my colleagues choose not to be there or can't be there because of their schedules, and knowing that at the end of that process, someone else is going to be playing that role. And I'm kind of sharing it, because this is a major issue for the City of Los Angeles. And we know some of you will be here beyond our terms, and at the same time, we're trying to make sure that the entire council understands it's important. So, I appreciate the comments made by Ms. Goldberg, and I think we all recognize the role she's played with the city in terms of personnel, as well as the living wage ordinance, and we recognize her for that work, and we need to continue in that direction for the city as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. All right, members of the council, the item has been amended and clarified. It is before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll.
Okay. I may-
Close the roll.
Okay.
Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. That's unanimous, with thanks to those who spoke on this matter by way of public hearing, and we're on to the next item, which I understand to be Item Number 14.
Yes, Mr. President, Item Number 14, there's a card from the public on the item.
All right.
As President, members, maybe the public wishes to speak, but I'd like to make a motion that Item Number 14 be continued there a week from this coming Friday at a time certain, like 11:00 a.m., where a vote will be taken. In the interim, the Transportation Committee will hear this matter at their next regularly scheduled meeting, or if not, call a special meeting for that purpose. And that is the motion, Mr. President.
All right. A motion is before us. Mr. Holden, may I ask if the motion is intended to preempt the public hearing, or can we have the public hearing?
You can still have the public hearing.
All right. Well, then, we're going to move to public hearing. The motion is before us. Is there a second to the motion on the continuance?
Sure.
All right. Let's then move to the public hearing. Two speakers wish to be heard, Ted Hunt, Dennis Zine, listed on the same card, and secondly, Julie Butcher, in that order, please.
We have a report from the staff.
Would you wish to have a report from the staff?
Contact.
All righty. Anyone from staff here to report, please come forward. That's fine. Now, Ms. Goldberg, the request is for a continuance. You wish to have a report from the staff and the hearing-
Continue it.
-and then the potential vote on the continuance?
Yes.
All right, please proceed.
We don't want it. We're going to hear from staff.
We're going to hear from staff at this point. Would you proceed, please?
What you have before you is a new parking MOU, which would succeed the current MOU that's been in place since 1987. And this MOU was negotiated in accordance with the council's instructions by a joint labor management committee consisting of eight unions and four management committee members. Since about 1987, this committee has been working on this MOU. The impetus for the MOU was the fact that the city was no longer- The impetus for the MOU was the fact that the city was no longer in compliance with AQMD regulations regarding its average vehicle ridership, and in order to ensure compliance, additional incentives needed to be developed in order to get city employees out of their cars and into car pools and et cetera. The new MOU provides for an increase in parking fees. It increases van pools. It expands the number of sites that employees have to pay fees for. And the parking fee increases from $25 to $40. It also, one of the significant elements of it is that it provides a transit subsidy of $50, increasing from the current fee of subsidy of 15.
All right, thank you very much. Any further clarification or explanations from staff? I do recognize one speaker who's on the board. Ms. Goldberg, you wish to be heard at this point, or?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to hear from the persons who are called, who submitted cards, followed by comments by the staff, I mean, by the members of the Council, and then we'll determine if it's going to be continued or acted on today. Sir, proceed.
Thank you. Dennis P. Zine, Vice President of the Los Angeles Police Protective League. There are many unresolved issues in this agreement, or alleged agreement, regarding the take-home vehicles and the charges that are going to be imposed on city employees, including police personnel. The League did not support the recommendation at the negotiating table, and we still do not support the recommendation, to impose a $40 charge, monthly charge, on police department take-home emergency vehicles. This is said to be an AQMD-pushed matter, and we've discovered that that matter with the AQMD can simply be resolved by implementing some form of a modified compressed work schedule within the police department and the city family of Los Angeles. This will simply solve the problem and avoid the imposition of charges on the vehicles. At least this Council should consider an exception for specific LAPD take-home vehicles used for emergency life-saving purposes. These are not perks. They represent the only on-call and fully-equipped police units available to quickly respond to situations 24 hours a day throughout the City of Los Angeles. We're talking about bomb squad vehicles. We're talking about Metropolitan Division vehicles, 168 in total. We're talking about SWAT vehicles, officers who quickly respond to hostage barricaded situations, 42 vehicles. We're talking about 251 motorcycle officers who service the City of Los Angeles during time of urgency and crisis. The total that we would ask for exemption is 480 take-home cars and motorcycles for the city. The potential income from these at the $40 rate is approximately $19,000 a month. Additionally, personnel assigned to West Los Angeles, Van Nuys, and downtown will be charged a parking fee to park their personal vehicles at police facilities. This new charge is not fair. Currently, they have a new parking structure in Van Nuys, and it took approximately 20 years to finish that structure, and now these folks who haven't had parking are going to be charged a fee to park in that lot. What price is safety and life worth in the City of Los Angeles? What will you do when the officers leave their vehicles, the take-home vehicles, at the police stations or satellite park them and don't take them home? You will not get the $40 monthly fee, and the public will suffer due to a delayed response to emergency response calls. How will the money generated by the charge be used, and how many city employees use public transportation at this time? The department has over 9,000 sworn personnel, and this is shrinking daily.
All right, Mr. Zine, I want to ask that you begin to wrap up so the next speaker can be heard.
Okay, Councilman.
Thank you.
Why destroy the morale even more than it is? We can't recruit new officers of the department, and they're leaving in droves. What other city charges their safety employees to take-home vehicles use exclusively for public safety? Officers can't use the vehicles for personal use. They can't use them to take the kids to school or go shopping. They can only use them for police use. I urge you not to be penny wise or dollar foolish, and consider, with the floods we've had, the fires we've had, the civil disobedience we've had, you need an emergency response operation, that emergency response operation, the vehicles that the officers take home, not for their convenience, but for the safety of Los Angeles.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. President, Pro Tem, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Ted Hunt, President of the Police Protective League, and I want to readdress some of the same issues because they're so important. You know, every journey person, police officer, is an investment to the city of approximately $500,000. If two officers leave out of frustration, that's a million-dollar loss to the City of Los Angeles. We know that we have a police department that's in crisis right now. Things are so bad that people don't want to work here. You can't attract people. Everybody in here voted, and they voted to give rewards or bonuses to get people to come here. You even said, "We'll pay you to move into the city," and nobody's coming. We've lost 1,100 coppers. That means you've lost approximately a half a billion dollars in soft costs that are going to have to be made up somewhere along the line. We have a perception here in the police department among the rank and file. You may not like it, you may not agree with it, you may think I'm full of baloney, but the fact of the matter is, coppers are frustrated and they're leaving. And the reason they're leaving is because the working conditions are intolerable. And part of this is going to be, when you put this, a fine, on the backs of a police officer, just so they can show up to work, they're going to say, not every one of them, a couple of them are going to just say, "That's the last straw." And then something else is going to come along, and they're going to say, "This is the last straw," and they're going to continue to leave. I tell you, you can't hire people because they don't want to work here. And this is going to be perceived, we perceive it, as a punishment for working at LAPD. Please do not do this, particularly not at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next speaker, please. I believe that's Julie Butcher. And that will close the public hearing.
Got to admit, these are hard guys to follow. Representing SEIU Local 347, the issue is really much more simple. It is a ratification of a negotiated labor agreement. Negotiations are just that, negotiations, give and take, win and lose. This is one agreement reached through a labor management process, and we believe that to reject this agreement, or any part of it, at this point would be to deny the efficacy of a labor management process.
I have no problem checking with you.
Just to get to this agreement, we believe shows that the process does, in fact, work. And this agreement, we'd encourage you to adopt, serves the overall interest of the city, its air, and its workers. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. That closes the hearing. The Chair recognizes Ms. Goldberg.
If we delayed a short time, I don't think there'd be any harm, but I don't see any reason for a delay. And the reason I don't see any reason for a delay is that this is a collective bargaining agreement. It was bargained with the two police bargaining units to impasse and went to fact-finding, and at the end of the fact-finding, the Fact Finder issued a report finding in favor of the Joint Labor Management Committee and stated that the two police units should be bound by an agreement that was negotiated in good faith by the JLMC. I agree that there are going to be people who are unhappy. Anytime you raise anybody's parking fees, there are going to be people unhappy. But the problem is, we have an AQMD problem. If we don't meet certain requirements, including making parking, driving your car alone to work less attractive, then we start getting fined on a monthly basis. That is imminent. And so we negotiated in good faith with our bargaining units, telling them the dilemma the city is in, and understanding that everybody in the City of Los Angeles is trying to breathe and live and work here all at the same time, instead of one or the other. And that's the dilemma we're in. So I, you know, unless there's compelling reasons, urgent reasons, that this has to go to a committee, I think we should vote for it today, and I would move the report.
All right, it's before us, but we have three other persons wishing to be heard. Mr. Hernandez is the next speaker.
I also rise, and I don't understand why we're delaying. Someone want to explain it to me?
The Chairman asked you.
I sit on Transportation Committee, and I don't understand what transportation has to do with this, except I do understand what air quality has to do with this, and I do understand what treating everybody the same has to do with this, but does someone want to tell me why?
Nothing more than a request that came from Mr. Savornage, asking that he'd be heard in Transportation, and.
But Mr. Savornage is not here.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Savornage is not here. Mr. Holden doesn't even sit on the committee.
Yes, but a chair.
My understanding is I'm the vice-chair of the committee, and nobody talked to me about it.
All right.
Does anybody want to tell me what's going on? I'm just asking. I don't want to make us look foolish, but I have no idea what's going on. There's no answer?
Nothing more than the request that came to the Chair after the continuance made by Mr. Holden. Maybe Mr. Holden has more information.
Mr. Holden, you know, every time you ask me to continue something, you give me a detailed reason why you want me to do that.
And I'm glad you always accommodate me. You brought my best support in that. And then after you, Mr. Goldberg. Well, the fact of the matter is that.
All right, you and Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. On his time. Mr. Savornage offered.
Mr. Holden, there's competition for your friendship here today. I know that's startling, but proceed. Mr. Wax wants to get in that line, I'm told.
Okay, fine. He's at the top of the list.
I thought he might be. We don't want to name that list, though.
Who else sends you things in the mail, Nate? Come on.
And for that, and for that, I want to congratulate you and compliment you for a lot of insight.
Yeah. Oh, Lord have mercy.
So in any case.
The Chair will call us to come back together.
When I was the Chair of the Committee, Mr. Hernandez, we always looked at that issue, and it was before the Transportation Committee. But I'm only doing what I was asked to do, and so, you know, you have to vote your conscience.
The request for a continuance is before us. Either we will vote it up or vote it down, but right now, we're going to hear from Ms. Chik.
The question is slightly different, I think, if we delay it, which I'm prepared to do if it's a, it sounds like a one-week continuance. But I did want to hear some comments back about the, how the recommendations impact, for instance, I'm particularly sensitive to the mention of the bomb squad. Was there a perusal as this went forward of looking at certain specific LAPD units where it is mandatory that they have a car accessible to them, et cetera, et cetera?
Negotiations, I'm not sure, I wasn't there at that point, but I'm not sure whether those specific units were mentioned, but the Police Protective League was represented throughout the negotiations and certainly had the opportunity to bring those particular issues to the Joint Labor Management Committee's attention. In general, the final agreement provided that all home garage vehicles will be, would be treated the same, and many of the vehicles used by employees represented by the other units are also considered to be emergency vehicles as well. They are employees who have to respond to sewage spills or some other emergency that occurs during the city, and so the committee believed that they should all be treated the same.
Just referencing your comment about the process and the negotiations, can you tell me over what period of time this took place and how many meetings occurred?
The negotiations began in 1997. It was a two-part process. The first part was to actually develop a set of ground rules for the negotiations, and there was an MOU that was actually adopted, that was signed by all city unions, including the Police Protective League, that established the process, which was essentially that everybody, that there would be eight union members of the committee and four management members with two votes, and that they would deal with all of the parking and transit subsidy issues.
And then how long did these negotiations?
And these negotiations probably took place over about a six-to-nine-month period, at which point the tentative agreement was reached by everyone, with the exception of, at that point, the Police Protective League and the command officers. And as a result of that, the remainder of the committee and the Council approved going to fact-finding to deal with the impasse with the Police Protective League.
And that's been done?
And that's been done. Following the receipt of the Fact Finder's report, the Joint Labor Management Committee again considered the recommendations of the Fact Finder. There were another couple of meet-and-confer sessions, and as a result of that, this is what is before you today.
All right.
So it's been going on for close to three years at this point.
Three speakers wish to be heard at this point. They are Mr. Fuhr, Ms. Sikolsky, and Mr. Holden, in that order. Fuhr?
Thank you, Mr. President. In a bold act of courtesy, I seconded Mr. Holden's motion to continue the matter. But now that I've listened to the testimony and the recommendations from the city staff, who I respect very much, I believe it's important for us to move forward, particularly given the principle that we need to be able to keep promises that we make, to keep deals that have been struck. And I think that Mr. Hernandez, among others, made some good arguments in favor of just doing it today. And so notwithstanding the act of courtesy of seconding the motion, I have no intention of voting for the motion, rather, but to vote for the matter that's before us as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Sikolsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Council, this goes back to a hard-fought rule that AQMD adopted many years ago, I think in the early '90s, was called Reg 15, which was imposing on all businesses the requirement to reduce air pollution in this basin. They had to establish car pools, rider incentives to be on buses, to be in van pools, et cetera. And the city is becoming, is coming belatedly to that. The city has its own corporate or entity of employers. And obviously, we went through that by way of labor negotiation. Well, I think there are some issues that were raised today that are legitimate in terms of, after we adopt this, working through AQMD with a belated response and saying, "Here is our program, here is how we are managing it," as is often the case, we can look and see, are there reasons to readdress it, reasons to revisit it for purposes of providing safety networks in the city? But I don't think that today is that time. I think this is, we don't really have the time to delay. We have been given time from AQMD to work this through. We've worked it through in the normal process of joint labor management negotiations in good faith, and we should keep the faith, adopt this now, and then revisit anything if there's necessity in the future, as it's brought forward, and again, the normal process.
Thank you, Ms. Sikolsky. Mr. Holden, followed by Ms. Chik.
Here's a good example that Kenny Hunt always said, "When you get three votes, you quit." The fact of the matter is that, early on, we might have had to support the Send-This Committee, but some people felt compelled to speak, and now you see what is about to happen. Even though I stand by my motion, it's a courtesy motion, requested by Mr. Savornage, and that's what I will do. However, I just want to say this, based on Mr. Hunt's comments. He has been with the department a long time, and he's still with the department. There are a lot of police officers who come and join the LAPD, good police department, and some leave early. Those who choose to leave early, we wish they wouldn't go. But the door swings both ways, and I think that the public has just about heard enough of the threats by saying, "If you don't like what's being done here, we'll leave." After we train you, and then you're going to hold up the public, it just doesn't sound right. All you have to do is check yourself on TV and do a survey within the community, and you're going to find that the public is going to begin to resent those kinds of statements. I've always supported the police department and the League. I will continue to do so for those who wish to stay. For those who wish to leave, I will wish them farewell. And those who come here, we should probably give them a little questionnaire. Do you want to work for this department? Do you like this department? Anything wrong with this department before you were hired and trained? I think that if you rub the smut in our face too long and too often, it's not good for anybody. And I just want you to know that I've been with the League, I've been with the department, my record will speak for that, my voting record, and I will continue to do the same. But I got to tell you, with crime being what it is today, rising, you can't stand on TV and say, "We will leave if you do this, we will leave if you do that." It's just not right. I'm going to vote to support the motion to continue. I will ask the clerk to read the motion, please.
There's a motion to continue this item to a week from Friday, which would be no.
There's a motion to continue this item to a week from Friday, which would be November the 3rd, and to have this item on the agenda at a time certain, and in the meantime, to refer it to person-- excuse me, Transportation Committee.
Time certain for the purpose of a vote. And they can-- and it also said if he couldn't have the next regular scheduled meeting, they should have a special meeting to make sure that it's heard in committee prior to a week from Friday.
Next speaker is Ms. Chik, followed by Ms. Goldberg.
There do seem to be some persuasive comments about why we should go forward today. Before I'm ready to make up my mind about supporting that, I can't help but think about and want to raise the question of a earlier decision some years ago on the part of the mayor and the council to remove 650 parking spaces in demolishing the Parker Center Garage downtown. I'm assuming that that is a separate issue, whether we have enough city spaces or not, that this is about air quality, traffic congestion. But I-- West LA and Van Nuys are now added to this policy. Is that correct?
Yes.
And they were added because-- Over other locations, they were added because--
They are now AQMD-regulated sites. Right.
Okay, so, once you get the parking structure up, then they're AQMD-related. Is that correct?
Yes, the Personnel Department to-- I'm Mary Ann Keen from the Personnel Department, commuter services. And those two sites, West LA and Van Nuys, are large sites that are regulated. However, they have very low average vehicle riderships, which is what the AQMD regulates us on.
Okay. And so then I'm correct, that the fact that we've lost 650 city-owned parking spaces downtown with no plans or means to replace had no part in our moving towards these recommendations?
No, it's a completely separate issue, and this was started years ago.
Okay, thank you.
I might add that the MOU that's before you has actually been approved by the AQMD as-is. So, any changes would jeopardize that approval by the AQMD. And commitment has been made to implement it by January of 2001. There are some procedural steps that have to be taken. The controller has to do some programming, and notifications have to go out to employees. So, there is some concern about-- Yeah, payroll system, because we have to program the new parking fees, which will be pre-tax instead of after-tax. So, there are a number of things that have to be done between now and January.
All right.
Right.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, I just want to say that I think that the issue of trying to retain police officers is an important one, and I don't mean to minimize that one bit. And I think you well know, gentlemen, that I think that's a very high item on my priority and haven't been-- do not feel very comfortable that I've been very successful in trying to deal with those questions. But I don't, uh, find that, however, a compelling reason in this instance, because I don't think most people will make their decision based on this. And you're right, there may be a few that will. I don't think it'll be key. I think there are many other, more important issues, and we should focus on those. What I do know is, is that a deal is a deal. We've negotiated this. To delay it is not a terrible thing, except that it will slow down the process of getting implementation, and we have a deadline by January 1st. So, I'm not, you know, I'm not-- Would not feel horrible if we delayed it a week, but I don't see any reason to do so. And the reason I don't see any reason to do so is we have taken this through the entire collective bargaining process. And once it has been through the entire collective bargaining process, unless people standing around this horseshoe were making substantive arguments that the conclusion was seriously flawed with that, then there really isn't anything but a delay in sending it to a committee. Because the committee, really, in order to change it, would have to take it all the way back into bargaining again, which would then kill the deal with AQMD, because we would then have to bargain again. If we bargained again and we came to this or a different conclusion, we would then have to go renegotiate with AQMD. They're not inclined to want to do that. We could face serious fines. And it really says to the employee bargaining groups that there's no end in negotiations, which is a bad thing to say to anybody who has gone through three years of good-faith bargaining about a matter. Because from their point of view, well, that means that everything is always open forever, and you never get to closure, which I think is a very bad thing to do in terms of personnel practices. So, I think we should just do this today, not out of any lack of respect to the chair of the Transportation Committee, but he is otherwise occupied. And I am sorry that he didn't have a chance to weigh in on this, but on the other hand, I don't think it would affect the outcome, and I think we therefore should move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg. All right, that concludes those who wish to be heard, um, as members of the council. So, the item is before us. First, we'll take the vote on the matter of continuance, as requested by the chair of the committee. And if there's nothing more to be heard, per the-- Per the motion by Mr. Holden, seconded by Mr. Fuhr, please open the roll on continuance. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Three ayes, seven noes.
All right, that failed. Next, then the matter is before us as presented and moved by Ms. Goldberg. Open the roll. Close the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
All right, that then passes as submitted. And we will move on to the next item, which is item number 16. Madam Clerk.
Uh, Mr. President, item number 16 is the next item, and it was called special by Councilmember Chik.
Ms. Chik, you had reason for calling item number 16 special?
Well, yes, because-- Thank you, Mr. President. But you know how some of us hard at work on committees like to tout our accomplishments?
Yes, indeed.
And in fact, uh, speaking of the Chair of Transportation Committee, Mr. Savornich, we all owe him a debt of gratitude for bringing forward the original motion, looking at the issue of how the city deals with its contractees and vendors. And we found that some departments need to improve the expediency with which they pay appropriate bills to vendors. And what we have before us today, I simply want to draw our attention to, is a very good thing. We also, in this scrutiny, realized that there are a lot of contracts where we could be getting discounts on the payments if we paid them within 30 days. And so, we've now developed boilerplate language and asked for all city departments in their RFPs and ensuing contracts to include this, so we make sure that we not only treat our vendors well and pay them on time when they-- when we owe them money, but that we save taxpayer dollars in doing of it. I also draw your attention to, colleagues, item two of the report, which is requesting city departments, including proprietaries, to do something that makes very good sense and include this language to get discounts for prompt payment, is now done in a request form. As of the new charter, we cannot direct general managers. We request. And so, I reiterate with great respect and underlining the polite request that general managers, we, uh, you know, go along with this requirement and comply and save taxpayer dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You've heard from the Chair of Government Efficiency, the matter is before us, saying that there's no one else wishing to be heard on it. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. That will then be the order. Next item.
Uh, Mr. President, there's been a request to continue one of the closed-session items, item number 28, request to continue to Friday, October 27th.
All right, if there's no strenuous objection, that will be the order.
Uh, next item, Mr. President, is item number 25, called special by Councilmember Chik.
Ms. Chik.
Yes, you have a busy Chair of Governmental Efficiency Committee. And actually, this is a great day for this to be heard, because my colleague who seconded this motion has introduced quite a few motions today coming forward, similar subject in terms of dealing with our tax structure. This motion is looking to our Business Tax Advisory Committee, our new Office of Finance, and other city professionals to come back with a report on how we can, in a very tight timeline, improve the city's rate of collections on money owed it. And the motion also includes a request to look at, um, the help of outside entities in the private sector. Other government municipalities are contracting with companies to go out and do debt collection, to go after some of the tougher bills to collect on, and then are being paid by a percentage of what they collect. It's found money, colleagues. I think it's something we need to look at doing more of in the city, and I eagerly await the report and the recommendations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chik. Another report from the Government Efficiency Committee. It is before you as presented. Mr. Wax, you wish to be heard?
Yes, the only thing I can add to Ms. Chik's is, Ms. Chik, you're going to have to really ride over this. This is not the first time this has come up. It's not the first time we've asked for this. It's not the first time they've reported back to us, and nothing has really fundamentally changed. In fact, it's a source of great frustration. This has been an issue over the years that has been repeatedly before us as to how to increase our collections for two reasons. One, of course, to increase the revenues. But secondly, it's simply not fair to the people who pay their fees and who pay their taxes and all, that others not pay it. It's just wrong. And yet, we have looked into everything from bill collectors to, you know-- And somehow-- I don't know why either. And so, perhaps you can not just trust them to come back with the report, but you can ride hurt over them, because it's going to, I think, take that and maybe carry this out. This isn't the first time, and it's been disheartening to not see-- Ms. Goldberg, she's walking in. She was on the committee, I remember. We're talking about collecting unpaid-- I mean, and in fact, Ms. Goldberg even related an experience of hers when I think she did this once for a living years ago. And I mean, I remember these discussions. And you know what? Somehow, nothing seems to change. And so, now we're coming back and asking for a report, you know, and how to improve it. And I'm-- I'd like a report on all the other reports also, perhaps to include in there, as to the reports that were previously issued and what happened with them. Maybe this is a good opportunity to ask them to respond to the prior efforts to do this and the results of that, because, as I say, it's an old issue, but it's as fresh and as necessary today as it ever has been. I'm glad you've resurrected it, but I'm lacking some confidence that, short of a whip, we're going to get something done here. But anyway, I just offer that, and perhaps we can include in there.
Please, Mr. Wax, we ask for restraint when you speak. Thank you so much.
Restraints and whips?
No. My goodness. Can we ask the sergeant to lend us an assistant counsel, District Two, please? Ms. Goldberg wishes to be heard, followed by Mr. Hernandez and Ms. Chik for a second time. Ms. Goldberg?
I'm going to just let that all go completely.
Yeah, please, please.
I think the issue that we have been talking about is an important one. I wasn't going to speak until you reminded me how many years ago we were working on this. One of the things I did actually have is one of the jobs I had in my life was in collections, which is not something I ever wanted to go into, but it was something I ended up in because it paid the bills. And what happened was, is we found out that our old team was the most successful in a very major corporation, because we just talked to the people we were trying to collect from instead of threatening them. And there were rules about how you had to accept only 4% or more of the bill each month, and we just violated all those rules and just made deals individually with people who-- 98% of whom wanted to pay the bill. The other 2%, we referred to the district attorney's office, because they were crooks. But 98% wanted to pay it. They were just in a variety of circumstances which made that difficult. And our team kept winning awards in this company, because we kept having a very high rate of return, and it was because we didn't follow all those rules. We just worked with each person. And our team leader was really good and got us to do that. And I just think that it's not difficult, but it does-- it is time-consuming, and it does take people who like talking to people and not people who see themselves as, you know, as I'm going to get them and I'm going to force them to follow whatever our formula was. And it makes a big difference. And I just think that at some point, I agree with everybody who's trying to make this happen. We've just got to get the right group of people in here and give them space and time and a good working conditions, because that was a part of it, is you have to have a place. And to do a kind of a team effort and get something done, because it isn't that hard. It turns out that most people do want to do the right thing. It isn't 100%, but it's pretty easy after you've talked to a people for about 10 minutes to find out whether they want to do the right thing or not. And the ones that didn't, we did refer to authorities in terms of fraud and prosecution. But the rest of them, we got to pay their bills. So, I just glad it's still being pursued. I hope we can get somewhere. It is not, you know, rocket science. And there are ways to get this done, and I just hope that we can get on the stick and do it.
Good, thank you. Mr. Hernandez?
I don't know if Mr. Wax remembers, but I also sat on that same Government Efficiency Committee that was reviewing collections. And, uh, we found some very striking issues when we would be meeting with the city attorneys in the controller's office. For example, the fact that we never solicited a social security number in any of our application processes, where people would end up owing us money. And so, because we didn't have a social security number, we couldn't participate in the practice of collecting. The other issue was the areas of that revenue stream. Or was it that we were collecting the money? And most of the time, it's up to the city attorney to threaten a lawsuit. And how much resources do you spend to threaten a lawsuit, to go to municipal court to establish and get a judgment and record that judgment to collect the dollars that were being requested to collect? So, I just wanted to let Ms. Chik know, I didn't think it was the first time that collections had been reviewed when Mr. Wax's chairmanship of Government Efficiency was reviewing it. And the fact that the controller of the city attorney's office also participated, as well as the CLE and CEO, did not give us the remedies that we need to deal with the issue. And so, I would strongly put an emphasis on getting some outside help. And when I say that, you do have the private part of it, but you didn't have it part of your task force. And I think that if you were to look at the kind of revenues that need to be collected and convene a task force of outside advisors, and I'm willing to give you some names, they might be able to give you a better understanding of what needs to be done to be collected. There are certain thresholds. We, as a city, for example, do not use collection agencies to collect our money. And we don't give them half of the money they collect. And so, we lose that half we could have gotten. But it's a policy decision whether we want to use a collection agency to collect monies. And so, again, I would just strongly recommend that you go outside of the city family and try to get some advisors as part of this task force to kind of look at the whole picture. And then there'll have to be some policy decisions that we'll have to make as a city. I don't think that we want ambulatory charges being charged of those people who can't afford to pay. But I don't think we want insurance companies to get away with using ambulatory charges and not reimbursing us for those fees.
Now, Mr. Hernandez, is your suggestion in the form of a recommendation that should be considered an amendment of some sort?
That the private sector be part of her task force? I mean, an actual part of working with the task force? Because I'm also just going to hear from the city family again.
All right, thank you. Ms. Chik?
First of all, I appreciate the comments and the suggestions of my colleagues. I want to point out, in terms of involving the private sector, I couldn't agree more. I thought I had addressed that in asking the Business Tax Advisory Council, which is made up of private sector experts, not necessarily, though, in collections. So, I think if we add members of the private sector who specialize in revenue and entitlement collection--
Yes.
--that that would do. I also would like to make Mr. Wax's suggestion into an amending motion, that this report include some discussion of prior reports and specifically include a discussion of why prior recommendations were not implemented.
All right.
Really, you know, we want to do lessons learned here. And then finally, I wanted to make sure my colleagues noticed that the motion is very much looking to recommendations about requests for proposal to involve the pri-- very much looking to recommendations about requests for proposal to involve the private sector in exactly the kinds of assistance that Mr. Hernandez mentioned. I wanna remind all of us that way before the new charter was passed, we created, with the instigation of my council motion, a revenue manager position that has yet to be filled. I've spoken with our new Director of Finance, she very much wants to fill that position. That the job description for the revenue manager is to especially focus on doing a better job of collections. And then finally, that in my meeting with the Director of the Office of Finance, she told me of some very, very basic, simple changes, like for instance, the fact that we wait so long to send out collection letters on some of our fees and fines, we wait so long that they become totally uncollectible, and by the time they're turned over to the city attorney's office, there's nothing the city attorney can do. So I think we're all going to be pleased with the recommendations that come forward, and I thank my colleagues for the warnings, I'm gonna make sure that I track this very carefully.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chik. Members of the council, you've heard the report from the Chair of Government Efficiency and the suggestions made by Mr. Hernandez, as well as Mr. Wax, which he has accepted as friendly amendments. Therefore, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item number 26, called special, there's an amending motion that has been distributed.
There's no one wishing to be heard on item number 26. You have a 26A, a motion that simply reduces the resolution authority requested from one to, from two positions to one. The positions are needed to implement a bottle, a grant program known as the Bottle Recycling Bill. That's what's before us, with the 26A. There's no discussion about it. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you very much. That will then be the order. Now, anything more before us, Madam Clerk?
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
All right, we see no one wishing to be heard. Next item then, Mrs., Madam Clerk.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
I think that would probably be an order.
You have motions for posting and referral.
Mr. Wax moves. Mr. Holden seconds.
And you also have an excuse on the desk, Councilmember Miskowski requests to be excused Wednesday, November 8th, till leave 11:15, City Business Meets Council Policy.
We record an anonymous vote in that regard. Thank you.
That clears the desk for closed session.
All right. All right, Mrs., all right, Ms. Goldberg has registered her sentiment and is so noted.
All right, thank you very much.
For those who are in attendance, we are now going to go into executive session. Those who are not here on business pertaining to executive session, we'd ask that you respectfully leave the council chambers, and we will notify you when we are. Clerk, the balance of the agenda, please.
On number 27A, settlement in the case of Gary Marshall et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., settlement in the amount of $350,000.
All right, Mr. Fuer moves. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. If you'd close the roll, please tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item.
On 27B, settlement in the case of Malickian versus City of Los Angeles, in the amount of $50,000.
All right, moved by Chair Budget and Finance. Please open the roll. If you would close the roll, now tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
27C, settlement in the case of Wagnon versus City of Los Angeles, in the amount of $205,000.
All right, once again, moved by the Chair Budget and Finance. Please open the roll. If you would close the roll, now tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. We'll have these items forthwith, please. Mr. Holden wishes to be acknowledged, recognized?
Yes, President.
Yes, sir.
In daylight today, at this time.
Yes, sir.
One vote equals 10.
Yes, sir.
Equals nine.
Yes, sir.
Especially if he decides to leave.
Yes, sir.
That means the nine can't operate.
Yes, sir.
For the record.
For the record, sir. Duly noted. Duly noted. Madam Clerk.
The desk is clear, Mr. President.
All right, members of the council, the desk is clear. Anyone wishing to be recognized for an adjourning motion? I see no one who has an adjourning motion, therefore we are...
Yes, 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 yes.
Oh, I see. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, sad to announce that Ms. Pearl Wilson passed away August 19, 10th District. Born in Birmingham, Alabama, became a schoolteacher and mother of five. She moved to Los Angeles in 1967 and taught in the Head Start Program from 1967 to 93. She retired at the age of 75, and she was 81 when she passed away, leaving five children. Also, Ms. Bertha Lee Jennings, she was a former employee of the Los Angeles County Department of Social Services and Federal Express. She owned and operated a B&amp;J Monument Company from '72 to '79, and later became self-employed as a real estate investor. Services would be held at 26, 9 a.m. at the Sky Rose Chapel in Rose Hill Cemetery in Whittia. She leaves three children and three grandchildren, certainly she'll be missed from the 10th District.
Thank you. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you for your attendance, we are now adjourned.